Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 1st, 2014 Board of Ed meeting. Before this, the Board was in executive session at 6:00 to discuss potential litigation for the district, a contractual matter, and an individual personnel issue. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Do you want to do introductions?
Joanne Cunningham, Christine Beck.
Jody Monroe.
Tom Douglas.
Brittany Barrett.
Michael Cooper.
Matt Downey.
Diane Steever.
Charmaine Wijchessinger.
And Judy Peeta.
I'd like to start off the meeting just by giving the oath of office to our three new board members, and I would like to start with Christine Beck.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New York.
Of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of member of the Board of Education.
Of member of the Board of Education.
Thanks. Do you want to do it again?
Joanne Cunningham.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New York.
Of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of member of the Board of Education.
Of member of the Board of Education. Thank you.
And last but not least, Matt.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New York.
Of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of office.
The duties of office.
Of the member of Board of Education.
The member of Board of Education.
Also, at this time, we're going to do oath of office for the Superintendent of Schools. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
The duties of office.
The duties of office.
Of Superintendent of Schools.
Of Superintendent of Schools.
So good.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up the floor for nominations for the Office of
Board President.
Would you like to nominate Matt Downey for Board President?
I'll second.
Do you accept that?
I do accept that nomination.
So first.
First and second.
Second, sorry. Do I have any other nominations?
I move to close the nominations.
Thank you. And do I have?
Second.
Oh.
Second.
Thank you, so.
All those in favor?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, any abstentions that carries, and Mr. Matthew Downey is declared President of the Board by acclamation. Congratulations. I'm going to pass this baton.
Do I have to take an oath?
Yes.
Yeah, does he take an oath first?
Yeah, I have to take an oath, Brittany. We want to make it official.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of office.
The duties of office.
Of Board President.
Of Board President. The Board of Education.
The Board of Education, thanks.
At this time, do we have nominations for Vice President?
I'd like to nominate Charmaine Wijchessinger for Vice President.
First.
I'll second.
Second, okay. I would nominate Mike Cooper for Vice President.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? At this time, nominations are closed. Do I need a second for that?
I'll move to the closing nominations.
I'll second.
Second, okay. And how do we do it, just?
Mike, if you have an opportunity.
Okay, Charmaine and Mike, if you would like to have a few minutes to say whatever you'd like to.
As I think most everybody knows, I've served as Vice President for the past year, and I feel I've grown in the role. It's a learning curve, but I think I've done a pretty good job this year, serving as a backup for Matt, and I think Matt and I work very well together. Part of my job, I think, is to be a sounding board for him, and so we have many discussions about board issues, and I also think this job is well-suited to my skill set, and temperamentally, I think I'm well-suited to the job, and I would be honored to continue for another year in the position.
Charmaine.
Thank you for the opportunity. I've served as a member of the Board of Education for five years. As I've entered my, as I enter my sixth year on the Board, and final year of my current term, I would like the opportunity to serve in Officer position and to have the opportunity to work with, advise, be a sounding board, have a kind of relationship with Mr. Downey that he and I work out. I don't know what he would expect or need from a Vice President, because I've never been a Vice President, but I would look forward to working that out with him and with Dr. Douglas. I think over the past year, I've continued to grow as a Board Member. I've sought out additional opportunities. I've gone to the advocacy night. I went to the Legislative Day, things I hadn't done before. I presented at the NISPA Conference on Issues of Social Justice, and that was a very interesting experience for me. I know that some Board Members came up to me and said, "We never talk about social justice at our Board Table, and yet we know the issues are there." And so I gave them some tips on how to do that and how to bring it into the discussion without being disruptive to the Board's function. I feel like, I need to say, I'm not running in opposition to Mr. Cooper, or my running or putting my name into the ring is not an indication that I'm unhappy at all with his performance as Vice President. I just know that in order to have the opportunity to be Vice President during this term, and I don't know what I'm going to do next year, if someone actually asked me the night of the election if I was running in a year, and I don't know. I haven't made that decision. I do know that before I leave the Board, whether it's next year or in the future, I would like the opportunity to try to serve the President, the Superintendent, and the Board in an advisory capacity. I do have a number of skills that I believe could be helpful to the President. In a prior position, I flew around the country and did Board Development and Board Retreats. I am, I believe, a very skilled writer and editor, but I also, I think, am a listener, and what I've said to some of the Board Members is, I really do get my role as a Board Member, and I believe I get the role of Vice President, to really support the President, to give him or her advice, and to be a sounding board and listener. I think, I definitely believe in consistency of leadership on the Board, and I, since I've served on the Board, every President has served for two years, and I think that's a great way to maintain leadership at the helm during trying and not-so-trying times. Each of these positions has a one-year term, and what I like about the Vice President's position is it allows the Board to have the consistency at the top while rotating in the skills and interests of other Board Members. And I believe by running for the Board Vice President position, I would bring perhaps different skills, perhaps the same as Mr. Cooper. I think a different perspective, because I fundamentally believe our perspective is shaped by the shoes we walk in, and I want, and the other thing I will say, and I'm taking a risk here, is I believe that the leadership position is a representative of our community and of the Board, and when the leadership stands, they're representing our community and our Board, and this past year, we have had a certain representation up there. I believe by having someone else serve as a Vice President, that representative representation can change, and perhaps should change, to reflect the diversity within our community. So that's why I'm running. I value Ms. Giacconi-Steevers, and I appreciate her nomination, and I would value your vote. Thank you.
I guess we'll go alphabetically, all in favor of Mike Cooper? All in favor of Charmaine? Charmaine wins. Congratulations, Charmaine.
Thank you.
Do I administer the oath, or do you administer the oath?
She administers.
She administers.
Or she.
Okay. Charmaine?
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New York.
Of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Vice President of the Board of Education.
Of Vice President of the Board of Education.
Thank you.
I would just like to personally thank all of the Board Member for supporting me and for the past year, and as my, and my role as President, and thank you for your continued support as President, and I would like to thank Mike for his hard work and dedication throughout the past year, serving as the Vice President, and I welcome working with Charmaine this coming year. Next on the agenda is Item 5, the selection of Board of Education Representatives, and just for Christine and Joanne's benefit, because I'm not sure if they've been through this before, we have several standing committees, and we ask that Board Members volunteer to serve on those. We cannot have any more than three representatives on the committee, otherwise we'd have a quorum at some of those meetings, so we look usually for two to three representatives on each of the committee. Sometimes we talk about it prior to our first meeting, but I don't think anyone has this year. So the first one is the BCTA Process Committee. It's the Bethlehem Central Teachers Association. It's a committee made up of representatives from the teachers' union, the administration, and Board Members that may meet anywhere from two to three, four times a year to discuss any type of issues that may arise. Who would be interested in serving on the BCTA Process Committee? Mike?
And C.
And, yep, Christine.
And C. B. Okay.
Okay. The next is the BCEAU Process Committee, just like the BCTA. It is the Support Staff Union Committee. Who would be interested in serving on that?
The other three.
It's the other three.
The three of us that aren't on the meeting.
Oh, okay. What if I wanted to be on it?
You're ex-official on all of them.
All of them, oh, okay.
Well, no, not real, in that case, so there isn't a quorum. If someone couldn't make a meeting, then you would be.
Okay.
But he could show to all of them, just not speak.
Right.
Or participate.
Ex-official status runs the president.
And I have done that in the past. Next is the Audit Committee. The Committee gets a report from our public accounting firm that does our annual audit, financial statement audit, and our single audit, and also works with our internal audit done by Questar, who would be interested in serving on the Audit Committee.
I'll stay on that.
Okay. I was hoping Christine would waver it, okay. So the three of you?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank goodness.
Next is the Policy Committee. Mike, Charmaine.
Well, Christine might. Usually sometimes we like to put, like, it's a good place for me to be Board Member, because they learn, like, a lot about different things, if you're interested.
Oh, no, you can serve, yeah.
You spoke too quickly.
Well, I don't mind doing the policy.
Yeah.
I mean, I could do the policy, but I thought Christine might.
So.
Who's policy? Mike?
And C. CW.
Do we need three, or do it's two?
You could have two on the policy.
We could have two on the policy, or do we want three?
It all comes to the Board anyway, so.
Right, right.
If Mike can have one.
Next is the Health Insurance Committee.
Can you describe the function of this committee?
I'll leave that to Judy, because she's the best one to deal with it. Hasn't met recently, but.
No, it has not met, although I envision it will be a little more active this year. We may want to have conversations so that everybody is aware of the impacts of the Affordable Care Act requirements as that comes into play. If we look at any other alternative benefit structures, for instance, through CASCHIC right now, we're exploring the creation of an Article 47 funding arrangement for the prescription drug component of the plan, so those types of changes is something that goes before the Committee. You have representatives from all of the bargaining units, and you discuss the pros and the cons, and you work to build consensus on which direction you should be moving in. So there will likely be maybe two meetings in this coming year. Interested?
Yeah, I would do that one again, too.
I'd be interested in serving on that one, too, as a regular member. And last, on the Standing Committees, Facilities and Grounds Committee? And this Committee, I mean, I haven't had full discussions with Dr. Douglas, but I would expect with the construction going on that this Committee might become a lot more active, maybe look at the change orders and different things that would be happening through the next two years, so.
This would probably have to have a monthly commitment, just because it would involve Greg, as well as myself, because a lot of things are going to happen, especially in the next two months, that it just depends, so.
I'll do that one.
Mike?
I'd be willing to serve if you need three, unless someone else wants, that's interested.
No, if you want to do it, yeah. Okay.
Mike Cooper, Diane Steever, and CW.
Okay.
Diane, Mike, and.
Charmaine.
Charmaine.
Okay.
I know, like, last year, can we make sure some of these meetings happened, because I know we really didn't have. Did we have any with the process committees for BCTA or BCUEA?
No.
Again, the purpose is if there's.
There was no issue.
Keep communication open between contracts.
Right.
But in previous years, we did, even though.
We would mean anyways, just as silly as, right, there was no pressing issues, just for people to kind of.
Yeah, right.
You know, and, yeah.
Have you only have two for policy?
Yes, two. Okay.
Do you want to be on?
Christine would be on policy.
Oh.
Good.
So I'll be in the next. I'll be in the next.
Okay.
I don't.
Moving on to Item 6, Appointment of Officers. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following appointment of officers, action items A through H.
So moved.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion?
Just a question. Does Phyllis Albano ever come to Board Meetings? She has?
She has, sometimes. She'll be, she's at the Audit Committee meetings.
Okay, so I'll meet her in person, then, yeah. No, I see her name, obviously, on all of the, you know, financial information, and just wonder who she is, and look forward to meeting her.
I think Tom is going to set up an orientation with you and Christine, you know, visit all the departments and principals.
So that's the part I haven't done yet?
Yeah, that's the part.
In each of the departments, as well as each of the buildings, we'll do an orientation, either individually or preferably together, but I don't know if your calendars will allow that, but we'll try to do that over the next month, month and a half.
Okay, great.
And one item on here, I think we should make special mention of, I know it was in the spotlight, too, is Item Number C, Tax Collector. Michelle is usually appointed just for the town of New Scotland. Town of Bethlehem has handled that, and the previous years for us, we have decided to handle that on our own and go through BOCs, which will actually be a savings for us, and the town actually was happy, I think, to get rid of that responsibility, and we'll make sure that all that information is communicated out to the taxpayers, so they know that the tax bills will be sent in, and there'll be two banks, I believe, that they can deposit.
Two locations.
With two branches, and with evening hours, that should make it more convenient for anybody who chooses to pay in person, as opposed to mailing it into the district's PO box.
In addition, we have a draft letter that we were working on today to start announcing.
And I know Ravina Queeman Selkirk is also doing it, opting out also for the town.
Make clear that they make their checks with Bethlehem Central School District, but to the town of Bethlehem. I want to make sure those checks are.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item Number 7, Other Appointments. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following appointment, action items A through F.
So moved. Second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? I do have one quick question on Item B. I know we're appointing Sal, and we have for the past couple of years, but previously it had been the Superintendent.
Yeah, one of the, one of the things that we changed a couple of years ago, the Superintendent can be ultimately the appeal to any hearing officer, and so what happens is you try to make sure there's a clear distinction between those two. So we have two Title IX compliance officers, one which will be male and one which will be female, and those will handle each situation independently, as well as gender-specific, and then, any questions, also have an appeal process all the way up through the Superintendent.
Because one is listed as coordinator and one is compliance officer.
Well, that, that compliance officer and coordinator, let me see, because the compliance officer on 504 would be Kathy.
And that's how it's listed.
What I would say is Sal wouldn't have any Section 504 coordination, so I'd say that's an error on our part, if we can strike those three words at the end. So he would be a Title IX coordinator, and we'll strike the Section 504.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item Number 8, Designation. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following designation, action items A through C.
So moved.
Second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item Number 9, Authorizations. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following authorization, action items A through F.
So moved.
That's a first?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item Number 10, Bonding of Personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following appointment of bonding of personnel, action items A through C.
So moved.
That's a first?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Those amounts are enough, right, Judy?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item Number 11, Other Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following policy, action items A through B.
So moved.
Second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion?
Discussion. Just a question, is the, are these, the Code of Conduct, I thought that was for the first reading, or, I mean, is this the approval of the actual policy?
This is the approval of the actual policy.
Okay.
You're required, you're required to approve it once each year. It doesn't mean that you can't make amendments or changes throughout.
Okay, and I did note that there were some changes, although I assume everything is in there, and the reason it's so lengthy and ornate is because it's complying with either federal or state regs.
Mostly with the state's project save legislation from, what, 10, 12 years ago or so?
2002.
Even longer, 2002.
Okay, it's really ridiculously long.
And then I'd love to say, I know, I don't know if Mike would also speak, but I believe we, there's a significant section on procedures, and I believe it gives students and parents, the reason there's so much detail is it gives people enough information to understand how things proceed, should there be a violation.
No, no, understood. It's not like anything in there, you would argue, with it being in there, because it's so ornate, it sort of covers the waterfront, but, you know, a Code of Conduct policy that's 31 pages long is pretty ornate.
A lot of that is because of the save legislation and the regulations required by New York State.
Yeah, okay. I figured as much, but something that lengthy also defeats the purpose of encouraging people to read it, and it really loses meaning on a lot of levels when something is this kind of weighty.
We do have in the handbook, so.
Yeah.
A summary of.
Right.
One of the regulations requires that you must have the full code available on your websites, but you also must do an abridged version and synopsis that must be sent out in one form or another to each student each year.
Right, no, it's.
We've put in a lot of work over the last couple of years, setting up the hierarchy of the layouts, so that hopefully it's easier to get through than the old version, and the problem with the Code of Conduct is that you need a certain level of specificity, but at the same time, you also want to keep it somewhat general, because you can't obviously cover the, you can't do every grain of sand on the waterfront, so you just try to do the major dooms.
Right.
And.
Well, it's pretty, it's pretty inclusive of the waterfront.
You're making me want to go to the beach, right?
No, it really is. I mean, it also does, I mean, it's an important document. There's a lot of stuff in here, a lot of very important language.
Gives a lot of guidance.
Lot of guidance, but I also think that probably the only people that will read it, maybe the audience today, because I'm pointing it out and making such a big deal about it, but the only people that are ever going to read this are Board Members and maybe some administrators, and it probably argues for the abridged version being, having a lot more emphasis placed on that, because that's probably the, you know, going to be the hallmark of the Code of Conduct for the district, so.
Well, the administrators really need the full version, so they're following, they're following it a little bit, like for parents and for students.
Yeah, no, I get it. It's just.
Most of them will only go to it once they're impacted by it, and try to search it, yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but there are certain sections with the A through Z that you can click on, and you might not get the full Code of Conduct, but you'll get little bits and pieces of it.
On the website?
On the website.
No, you get the whole code.
I think on the website it pulls up the whole thing.
Okay. No, very comprehensive.
Yeah, and I believe.
Wanted to know a little bit about.
And that has been reviewed by our attorneys too, right, I believe?
The initial onset. There's, there's nothing that's a major structural change. A lot of the changes in this is actually making it so it's more eye appealing, that it's an outline form, that you can flow through it much easier versus there was some duplication of language just because the document kept growing.
Right.
I think we shaved a page off it.
If there had been changes, we would have had to have a public hearing at the beginning of this meeting, if there had been actual.
Substance change.
What I might suggest for the Policy Committee is oftentimes we don't start the review of the code till after, till we're almost on top of the meeting where we have to approve it. So if we perhaps could push that forward a bit, I know we might be getting into budget time, but I know that we're always pressed, and I'm sure there'd be feedback. There's, I'm sure still some duplication, some ways of tightening up, but it's hard to do that with one or two meetings where we're also reviewing other policies. So perhaps for next year, if we could move that up maybe even a month, I would suggest, so that we really, even though there may not be significant substance changes, we're always going to find something.
I just asked Brittany to put it on the calendar for me.
And I would just repeat again, you know, for, especially for our TV audience, if they need some interesting reading over the summer, the policy, whole policy manual, including the code of conduct, is on the website. So, you know, it is available to everyone to look at.
There are students reading it, because I was on the Board of Examiners for the Lab School, and we had an interesting discussion on search and seizure, and the student was quoting the code and giving her perspective on what should or should not be allowed before the Supreme Court decision just came down.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item number 12, approval of minutes, the minutes of the June 18, 2014 regular board meeting. That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item 13, Student Senate, is there a Student Senate representative here tonight?
I doubt it.
I don't think.
They're not, they're not here. Next would be the Superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Downey. We have a couple of things that we need to discuss, but first and foremost, I want to congratulate, you know, our entire faculty and staff as the 2013-14 school year came to a close. You know, by giving their best every day for the district, the district has made great strides towards our goals as educators. And we all know that this says a lot about the individuals that were involved throughout our educational process over the past year, as they overcame several obstacles that have been thrown in their way, as we adjust to them, namely being common core, our funding problems, and also adjusting to our annual professional performance review process, which I think we have a pretty good relationship, although the state is saying that we're testing more, even though we're one of the districts testing less. So we got that notification today. But I want to thank the faculty and staff, the administration, the parents and the students for an outstanding year. In related news, just as we came in on Thursday of last week in the Albany Business Review, which I don't understand a little, because they have just released the school report for 2014, naming Bethlehem Central School District as the Capital Region's number one school district in Albany County. This ranking is a direct result of dedication and passion of each of our individuals within the district, as well as throughout the district, as on behalf of our community. I thank the students and staff for their great work, again, on behalf of myself, as well as the Board of Education. I think they really take the pride in these awards and commendations from our community. The reason why I say I don't understand it is because for the past three years, we have been the number one in upstate in the Capital Region. But in the Albany Business Review, we've gone one to, we've gone one-one to one, but yet they're run by the same company. So I don't understand that totally. So we're going to try to get that determination, but always being on top is one of the great things that we try to maintain. I think everybody should be proud of that. One of the additional things is last Friday, we had graduation, obviously. We had beautiful weather. And, you know, it was a wonderful way to celebrate the end of the year at Sepq Center. And, you know, my congratulations to Class 2014, not too many beach balls, wonderful speeches by the students. And we had, all in all, a generally great graduation evening for everyone to enjoy, as well as the aftermath of it. Also tonight, although you're going to hear a presentation by Mr. Nolte, a little about our operations maintenance updates with the capital project. The capital project is officially underway. You know, everybody's starting to see that there's going to be a great deal of adjustment over the summer, but we'll wait for that. So we want the Board to be aware as we start to gear up, because there will be a lot of happenings over the next two months. In regards to, one of the things that the Board has been talking about over the past several months is our Chinese program. One of the things that we've been doing during my report is updating that we have been going through the search process. We've had our application. We had roughly 13 individuals that applied for the job, and we've gone through that process to the point we were hopefully culminating at this week, point in time, roughly about a week before the July 15 deadline that we impose. So I want to turn it over to Ms. Monroe at this point, just to update the Board where we are at, as we need some direction from the Board.
So as Dr. Douglas indicated, we started our search process. We did advertise the position as a 1.0 to see if that would be more attractive. We did interviews. There was a committee interview that interviewed, I believe, six individuals, one, then we brought some other individuals back for teaching interviews. That's our process we typically do. And unfortunately, none of those candidates we had, one we thought perhaps would be moving forward. However, at this point, we have no teacher that we would recommend for the Chinese position in the district. So if you recall, the options we had talked about during the earlier discussions when we had them about the Chinese program was that we would find a way for the ninth and 10th grade students to continue and get their requirements for the Advanced Regions diploma. However, if we did not have a teacher, we would recommend that the middle school students switch to an alternative language. We have an accelerated Spanish program that we would recommend students go into. However, if they want to go into French, certainly we would help them and provide them with supporting materials. But that's where we stand currently. So the other option, or the other discussion we had with the middle school is, is an online option viable. There are really no programs that we can offer in Chinese that would give the students requirements they would need to meet for four years to get their Advanced Regions requirements. It's just not, it's not a good, it's not a possible option at this point from programs we've looked at. And it's also, I don't believe, a good option for middle school students for language when the primary purpose of language is communication, and an online program is not the best to learn that in. So that's where we are. My recommendation is that we obviously allow the Chinese program for the ninth and 10th graders to do some kind of a blended learning option, perhaps an online option or some, a combination of that would likely be with, we would likely get an adult who could speak Mandarin to assist the students in some way. It would not be a certified Chinese teacher at this point that we know of. We would continue to look for that and recommend the middle school students switch to an alternative language.
As the administration, you know, we've, we have worked tirelessly, and I commend Jody as well as Dr. Bell, as well as all the other individuals that have gone out of their way to try to find potential solutions. I think the Board, over the past three years, has been very steadfast in trying to find options. We, I mean, I want the community to understand, this is not a student issue. This is the sheer fact that the laws, the regulations, and the applicant pool is very difficult and tenuous at best to try to find a qualified applicant. Even when we find qualified applicants, they still have to accept the position. We are at a point where we unfortunately have no other option. And although we said by July 15, we've gone through a full search, and we've had great responses. Unfortunately, some of the things that we've talked about in the board meetings, as well as at the parent meetings, is unfortunately, some people, when they find out it's in Albany, it's not near their locale. When they don't have certifications, the hurdles may be too steep. Even if we were willing to take a risk at one point with someone that's certified, and we end up losing that candidate for whatever reason, we can't do much more than that. And I want to commend Jody as well as Dr. Bell in that time and effort. And we don't want anyone to think that we were not trying to move as steadfastly forward with the Chinese program. We were hoping, unfortunately, at this point, we have no other alternatives.
And I would add, not just this year, but Dr. Bell and the teachers who have interviewed administrators over the past many years, hiring for a Chinese teacher has been very difficult. But we've spent a lot of time trying to recruit people, trying to maintain teachers, more so than any, I mean, you know, I oversee all of the hiring for different departments, and I can say that we've spent more time on this particular one area than any other area in the past five, six years.
So at this point, basically, from my Assistant Superintendent for Corrective Instruction to myself, as well as our administrative team, we need final direction from the Board. Our recommendation is, is that we proceed with the phase out. In the future, if the supply of teachers, not students, is there, we would be confident to come back. But at this point, unfortunately, we do not find a viable supply for the Capital Region.
Jody, if we did a, an online option at the high school, what are the costs looking like?
There's a few different programs we've looked at. They usually are a per, right now they're listed as a per pupil expense. However, if we did, we may be able to negotiate the price. There's also one of the programs we're looking at, which is probably one of the most viable. You can purchase it either with or without a certified teacher as part of that. We would likely purchase it as, with a certified teacher. That way, if we have, if we're able to get someone onsite who is, can, is able to speak Mandarin but is not certified, we have that certification covered. So that, those are the factors that play into it. I'd say I found them anywhere from $100 per student to $300 per student, some are by semester, some are by a length of a year. So it really varies. But they're, they're not, they're not astronomical.
I support your recommendation. And I just, I just hope some of our higher institutions of learning are, you know, taking note that maybe they should be encouraging their students to major in Chinese, so that there is a pool of teachers. Because I know there are a lot of other districts who are looking for Chinese teachers also. And obviously, if you're down closer to the city, people have a better chance of finding somebody. But I just hope that that occurs, so that we can have it again in the future.
I agree. I would accept your recommendation too. And I'm just, I guess, as a wonder, and I know that sometimes, like, we do professional development, or sometimes teachers get stipends. If there's a way down the road, like, our foreign language teachers could actually take some Chinese courses and, you know, do certified, if we could help pay that source or some type of help, you know, just kind of throwing it out there.
Sure.
I guess there's not really an option B. It's just sort of, we don't really have candidates. I mean, we have to plan for next year, and, I mean, that's why we looked at the July 15 date. You know, I was really, really hopeful, and I'm an optimist, so I was just so looking forward to a positive outcome to this. And, and I really am disappointed. And I know, Jody, you have tried very hard personally and put a lot into this effort. I do want folks to know that the Board was there, the administration was there. And if somebody had popped up through this process, and it looked like there were some promising folks who at the end, you know, one individual, actually the most promising individual, ended up withdrawing. And I think that's important for people to know, that, you know, there was a lifting of heaven and earth to get this done. And I really appreciate that. I do hope that we are a leader academically in this region, in the state. I do hope that we, as a Board, recommit to the idea at some point in the future, when there's clear, you know, or we are sensing there may be demand or a supply out there, to revisit this. Because, you know, many, many of the comments, and we all heard them during the, you know, past few months about Chinese, that, you know, students came up and talked to the Board and were very, very compelling. And, and many, many parents, and I really, really appreciated many of the comments, and I know we all did, about the fact that Chinese really does put us on the map academically. And it does make us a leader, and it gives us an edge, and it gives us a little bit of cachet in, you know, other respects. So I hope we, as a Board, at some point, will roll up our sleeves again and try and figure out how we bring this back to Bethlehem. I support your recommendation, because I honestly don't see any alternative. We have to figure out what we're doing for the fall and figure out how we staff classrooms and create a path for students. So appreciate all that you, both of you have done, as well as Dr. Bell, of course. So thank you.
And I would reiterate all of what Joanna said. And it was Dr. Bell who had come back, come to the Board encouraging us to institute the Chinese program and wanted to be a leader in the district and in the Capital District. And, you know, has put every effort she has and the administration has. And like Joanna, I was very hopeful, very hopeful that we would be able to continue on. But, you know, they had advertised widely, had received applications, and unfortunately, it's got to the point where we don't have an option again, other than the online course, which is very unfortunate.
Jody, how will parents and students be notified since now the summer?
We will be drafting letters to get out, hopefully, if not tomorrow, probably Thursday, letting them know of, you know, obviously, each grade level's a little bit different as to what we would send them, which we sent them back in June or May, whenever we posted the position, that we would be informing them during the summer. So, and then we'll get the schedules together. And we do have some students in the middle school who had already indicated they wanted to go to the summer enrichment program that we made available to them. So there might be some students that will still, or more, we might have a few more students add to that as well.
We will start work on that communication tomorrow, if that's what the Board decides.
And also, Jody, I know at the last meeting, someone had raised the issue of a conflict, no matter what, I believe, in the high school with continuing the Chinese. You are working with Mr. Landry on resolve, trying to resolve that, so that whoever's in Chinese can continue with the online and still to participate.
Right, with the, with the online option or a combination of some kind of blended learning, that, that should reduce or eliminate that conflict for, I think, all of those students. So hopefully, they'll all be able to get into, it was banned in orchestra that were the, the problems.
Okay, one other question. I know that oftentimes scheduling is a concern for parents. So if there has to be a change, let's say I was operating on the assumption my child was taking Chinese, and now she, we'll say in this situation, is going into Spanish. My second worry would be, well, what about the other courses? And is that going to, you know, cause snafu in her entire schedule? So if there's a way you can reassure parents that, just because we're not carrying Chinese and the child is going into either French or more likely Spanish, that the child's overall schedule will not be totally.
In the middle school, the accelerated Spanish offering will be offered when Chinese would have been offered anyhow. In the high school, it shouldn't have an impact. The only potential impact is if they change into a different language. That may change when they can take their other classes. If they opted for Latin, let's say, you know, that's not offered at the same time, perhaps, when their Chinese class was. So it may make a difference into what other sections they're in. But it shouldn't preclude them from taking other courses.
There's potential, no matter what, especially in a high school schedule, that there will be snags.
Sure. And I think it's probably reassuring for middle school parents to know that you're basically swapping out one language for the other in the same slot.
Right.
Great, thank you.
Just quickly, I wanted to commend Dr. Bell and Ms. Monroe on the Chinese program and all the work that they've put into it over the last five years. My son, you know, he participated in it, and he, we were part of all the changes with the teacher. And it's unfortunate that we couldn't retain and attract a qualified teacher to continue the program. But I support the decision.
Do we have a motion to phase it out? That's a first and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries?
Couple remaining things before, just before the end, we need to talk with our calendars about a retreat date for the Board of Education between now and, say, the next Board of Education meeting. And then on top of it, with graduation comes also a yearly program of senior celebration. And one of the things the Board, after we get some information, the Board and the district will need to have some further discussions on senior celebration and the incident that occurred this past weekend. Just because we do not have all the details of it at this point, but there is some cause for concern that we're made aware of at this point. Other than that, that concludes my report. And I want to thank the Board for their discussion on Chinese. I know this has been something that's been weighing on us for the past several months.
Any questions for Dr. Douglas?
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot. One thing. I know, I know. But also, there isn't really a place in this. Tonight, we have a couple representatives from the Bethlehem Center, Central Community Foundation. I know- I know they wanted to present something to the board, so if we can give them just a couple minutes real quick, it's not on.
It was.
It was?
It was in the update.
It's in the update, but I don't know, is the donation in here?
Except donation.
Yeah, the donation.
Yeah, you're going to approve it, but they wanted to just talk to the board.
Yeah, okay.
Because it would be way under grace.
We have come here with our big check, and our big check is to award ten thousand sixty-six dollars to the district in support of the Classroom Innovation Grant Program. And the Classroom Innovation Grant Program is where faculty and staff can apply to the BCCF for special initiatives to enhance learning within our schools, and we were very pleased to receive many wonderful applications this year and awarded sixteen grants. And the total amount of that grant is ten thousand sixty-six and ninety-six cents. So we're very pleased to award that tonight. Oh, all right. I'm, you're asking for our names? I'm Leslie Chu, I'm a member of the board.
And I'm Marjorie Minich, a member of the board as well.
And as a liaison to the group, I just think they have worked awfully hard to raise money for teachers and administrators to do things that they couldn't do otherwise. We certainly don't have money in the budget for these items, and I just think that's wonderful. I mean, over ten thousand dollars you raise, I mean, that, that's just great, great effort, and just wonderful. So thank you.
Thank you. And if we could add that the reason we're able to do this is through the support of the community. The community came out in force for our two great events, the jamboree in the fall and the basketball classic in March, and, and also supported our membership campaign very well this year, and the funds raised from that are why we're able to award these grants.
Thank you very much. It's, the listing is, you know, items that really we, as a district, should be supporting, but because of budget cuts, we haven't been able to, and, and for you guys to step forward is great. Thank you. Board out here for a picture?
Yeah, I'll just do this.
Thank you.
Is that your dance?
Yep. Next is Board of Education report. As Dr. Douglas had said, we had graduation last Friday night. I think it went very well, other than my throat getting a big cough in it, but, and also, we had the moving up ceremony Thursday morning for the eighth graders. I, I think it was wonderful. The place was packed with the parents and grandparents and siblings, and I think it's well appreciated by, by all of them, and congratulations to the eighth graders as they move up to become freshmen here at the high school or move on wherever they're going. I, like I said in my speech, I encourage them to participate in all the various activities we have, you know, we have, we offer them so many opportunities, and I hope they take advantage of those. And again, congratulations to the class of two thousand fourteen as they graduate.
And the lab school celebration also was...
Yes. Yep, I wasn't able to attend that one, but, yep.
Christine was there too.
It was record-setting in time.
But it's, it's, you know, it is a nice, the group is very intimate.
Very emotional, and the kids really enjoy getting their, their speeches, so graduating seniors.
Anyone else want anything? Mike?
I just wanted to personally congratulate Charmaine on her election, and I'm sure you'll do a great job, and if there's anything I can help you do in terms of getting acclimated, please let me know. Thank you.
Before the party at the lab school, they had to sit before the Board of Examiners. I did do that for one day and appreciated the students, all the effort they put into their, both papers and presentations, and the faculty involvement, and it was, it's a wonderful opportunity to involve the community in that particular program and in the school district, so I appreciated that opportunity.
There's a great article on Sunday's New York Times in the review section called, Why Teenagers Act Crazy, and it is required reading for anybody who is a parent or serves on a board. It's basically, it, it walks you through the different parts of the brain development for teenagers and what parts are, are sort of lagging in their development or, or a little nascent in their development, and why that leads to certain kinds of behaviors and so forth. Required reading, really, really fascinating.
Would you say New York Times?
Yeah, Sunday's New York Times, the review section, but if you just look on their website, it's on the website, and, yeah.
Just the eighth grade graduation ceremony was a nice ceremony. Mr. Klugman did a nice job with the moving up speech to the eighth graders, and Mr. Landry also spoke to them about moving up to the high school, and I think they enjoyed it, and the kids were acknowledged for their accomplishments.
It's just a little too hot.
I didn't think it was as bad as it could have been.
Being in a tie and a jacket, it was hot, but. And one other thing I'd like to mention, too, is we, we always heard, you know, told we should be collaborating with other municipal entities and whatnot, and one thing we're going to be doing this coming fall is normally we take a tax anticipation note, and we go to a lender and borrow it. We are going to actually be going to the town, and the town is going to be lending us money at a cheaper rate than we would be getting through a bank. So it would, they're going to earn some revenue higher than they would if they put it in a savings account, and we'll be getting a cheaper rate than if we borrowed the money from a bank, so.
I think that's great. Of course, everybody should understand that each department over there is allowed, like, even up to a twenty percent fund balance, whereas we're allowed four percent. So they probably have...
Just think of what a good thing I was trying to make. But I, I do appreciate the...
But I think this is great.
Right, I think, again, it's a...
It's a win-win.
Win-win, and, and maybe it's something we can use towards the future of where we're have that tax freeze, and you're supposed to show savings and cooperation and whatnot. I, I hope it will be something that we can show to...
Which is amazing, we're still waiting for what that tax plan is supposed to be.
It is subject to approval from the Office of the State Comptroller, but it's a fairly nicely laid-out proposal for them, so we're not anticipating any problems with that. So I expect you might see it becoming used more frequently by other entities.
Right. Because with our fiscal year starting today, we don't see the revenue, the tax collections don't come into September, so there's always that cash flow issue.
Right.
Anyone else want anything? Okay, moving on. Next, we have our presentation by Greg Nolte on operations and maintenance update, the bond construction, and if anyone hasn't driven down Van Dyke, you need to, because there is, the football field is no longer. But huge, huge amounts of dirt, and the end result will be well worth it. I know there'll be, you know, not being able to use that facility for the coming year, but the end product, I think, we'll be very happy with.
Well, happy summer. Unfortunately, my two-month vacation was disapproved by Ms. Kehoe, so I'm going to be here. As Dr. Douglas said, we are full steam ahead with the construction, both inside and out. A lot is planned for this summer, a summer that actually is probably one of our shortest summers in many, many years. But tonight is not necessarily a nice fancy presentation. We'll do that next time, and we'll show you pictures of all that's kind of going on, but this is more of a discussion about a couple things. So I'm going to start off with the good news, okay? The high school pool update. This was the hundred thousand dollar capital outlay that you approved and the taxpayers approved this thirteen, fourteen year. This was basically rebuilding the structural columns in the pool area. They, basically, the concrete footings have been poured, tiles around it, finishes are starting to happen, painting is substantially done. As you may recall, we received a very favorable bid of about thirty-seven thousand dollars. We actually worked with SED to say, hey, how can we maximize and do more, because we have this hundred thousand dollars, so we can maximize the money that we have and the aid that we're going to get next year. So basically, they, they indicated that we could do some more painting of the trusses and of the ceiling, which was actually designated as part of some of the main work that we wanted to do in, in that, in that area. So we actually have negotiated, both campus, our construction manager and architect negotiated a change order with Bonkov, who is our contractor on the job, for about forty-three thousand dollars to do that painting work. And then we also had another change order, a small change order for about five thousand dollars because of some added concrete work that we encountered as we dug down to the existing footings that weren't exactly what the drawings showed from right back in the sixties or so. So basically, in all, the project is, is under budget and is just about complete. It's really an amazing transformation. You don't want to go in now because you still have a lot of paint odors in there that are getting basically sucked out, but it's going to be, it's going to be just a tremendous transformation. The fourteen, fifteen capital outlay, which, which I'm calling Phase Two in the pool, is already being, starting, starting to be designed by the architect, and we'll let you know, and we'll, we'll keep you updated as far as that goes.
So Greg, on that, there's two change orders generally for last year to complete the capital outlay that had to be turned around rather quickly.
Correct. Yes. Actually, I'm going to say three. There's, there's one, another one for nine hundred or a thousand dollars for one other item, which is being, Scott, do you know? No, no, it was, as we exposed some of the steel columns prior to painting, there was some cosmetic work that had to happen, so those columns would look nice, because now they're exposed prior to painting, so there was some prep work with some welding that had to be done, all right? And that work just happened, so that was about a thousand dollars. So all in all, we are under, under our budget.
So, and that will complete according to state education requirement, the billing procedure, all so that it's within the hundred thousand dollar mini project...
Correct.
...scope, which was originally intended, but we had to change it rather quickly because of the emergent conditions of the column.
And we won't be into this, this period next year, we're starting this process much earlier this year for Phase Two. Okay? The second item I wanted to talk about was the, for this coming bond, the change order allowance authorization process. Did, does everybody have? Okay. This is a draft, a little bit of history. This is very similar to what we, the process that we used for the last couple bonds here. Basically, we need something in place that is acceptable to everybody and kind of basically, like, different levels of authorization of work, so this way we don't hold up any, any of the construction. So basically, you can have changes in scope and pay for it in two different ways. You have allowance use authorizations, okay? Within our current seven contracts that we have, we have about two hundred thousand dollars worth of allowance authorization, split up amongst those sevens, okay? Now, that doesn't change the value of our current contracts, okay? So as we encounter something with the GC for five thousand dollars, we can take it through the allowance authorization, it's not an add to that contract, and it's just, it's just a one process that we have, the overhead and profits already built into it. So we have that process, okay? And the same, how we approve that is the same as it would be for a change order, which I'll, I'll talk about in a little bit, okay? Actually, no. The change orders, basically, we start off where we, we ask the contractor that, please provide us a price for blank, okay? The contractor will give us a cost proposal, we will then maybe negotiate the cost proposal, we'll talk about the hours to see if it's fair and this and that, and if it's accepted, then we'll do a change order request, then it, then it basically is created into a change order, which is then brought before the board. So there, there's a, a, a number of people looking at this, the construction manager's involved, the architect's involved, the engineers are involved, the district is involved, I'm involved, and my staff, you know, throughout this whole process, to make sure that whatever comes before you has been thoroughly reviewed and checked and is, is fair, basically. So understanding that we need to keep this process going, that there is a lot going on already, and why I'm talking to you tonight, that we need this process in place, because things move very, very quickly, the two months is a very, very short time. I think what also has hurt us this year is the late approval from SED, because a lot of this coordination with all of these trades and, and, and the contractors really diving into the drawings and seeing, well, we can't do it this way, we have to do it that way. It's, it's, we struggled in the past month to really get everything going, so basically, we can complete as much work as possible this summertime. So what I've also outlined here is the different levels of pre-authorization. Again, everything will come before the board, but these levels is, is similar to what, is exactly what we had on the last project, okay? Feel free to stop me.
Greg, I would just have one question. On the, the third level up, the twenty to twenty-nine, nine, I would probably recommend you also have the chief business and financial officer on that.
I'll have that too, so it's a stepping...
Yeah, because we want Judy to be aware of any financial impact on anything.
Before I, and I would say, by having that stepping level, it, it helps to create oversight and accountability, but I'd also add, I know Judy and I have talked about this, that at Greg's level, that there's also a cumulative total, that we have to add that, you know, between zero and nine ninety, nine ninety-nine, yeah, that's understandable, but if you have a hundred change orders for nine ninety-nine, and Greg approves them all, there's no control. So we want to put in some type of cumulative. I, I don't know what that amount should be, I would say up to a hundred thousand would be my first initial guess, because I'm hoping we're not going to be having, like, ten different change orders for ten thousand dollars apiece. Scott, does that make relative sense, and talking to Mr. Boris, who is our project manager for campus construction? No, we're, we're under right now, but I know Greg's going to give some information.
And we're using the whole process where we have an encumbrance in place for the value of the contract, as we're paying the balances, we're reducing the encumbrance, we're showing the retainage that's payable on that, so there are multiple checks and balances on the whole progress of the jobs with the variety of contracts.
And I, and I can basically say, if anything gets to my level, it's going to be because it has to be an emergent condition, otherwise it's coming to the board. I mean...
Right, and, and the other thing is, if that happens during the summer, I mean, we could always have emergency board meetings, I mean, we only need four board members with approval, so...
And that's where I think the Facility and Grounds Committee could help out, like, even during the summer, depending, I can't remember.
Well, you need...
If people are available, which all of you are for a quick meeting in the morning, say, every two weeks or something, that might be something that will help Greg and myself with some of those discussions before we even get to the board stage two.
Yeah, we are tracking costs daily, hourly. It's just a matter of how much and how frequently we report to the board, and do you want five change orders every two weeks or ten, ten change orders once a month, you know? I think a lot of it, a lot of it's going to happen during... orders once a month, you know? I think a lot of it, a lot of it's going to happen during the summertime. I am very optimistic about the lack of change orders we're going to have.
I was hoping you were going to say or none at all.
I don't know how the rest of the board, I would rather have them as they occur. So every, every meeting, if there's change orders, I think we should see them.
Yeah, I think that's the best way.
Are you going to have an aggregate total though?
I think the aggregate total, I think at each level should be no more than 100,000. I can just tell you, at the third level, it's 100,000, but unless it's an emergent condition, nothing's changing until the board approves. I just, I don't feel comfortable sitting there and taking up to $30,000 and saying, go ahead.
And I just don't see us getting to that aggregate level between meetings. Yeah, I mean.
I just think you should have a safety net that says, there's a break here. It might be a sort of a day where all of a sudden 15 change orders come in and they want to move. Guys, we can't do that. I mean, that's usually in very large projects, even though this is probably a, a small to mid-sized project for a district this size. I just think it's better to have it in writing in our process that we have a safety net there that looks out after the district's best interest too. Because we don't want people to feel like rubber stamps, but we also have to be able to work and get the best price. And sometimes by being able to make the decision and move at that point, you could potentially get a better price.
And again, we know everything in the pipeline. It's not, we're not going to be surprised that one day we're going to get 15 change orders. We're going to know that those 15 change orders are being developed and that type of stuff, so.
What I would also add is I'll ask Greg, any change order immediately goes on to that week's update. So at least you know what's going.
And just on the, the back page, what we'll do, just, just to keep track of everything, is by contract, we'll give you summaries of, of the general contractors and what we started with and how many change orders you've already approved, how many are pending, what we're looking for, for action, and give you a brief blurb as far as what we're looking for, for the change order that we're looking for action on. So very similar to the process for those of you that were around for the previous bond.
Okay. Do we need to vote on this?
Can I just have one more question, actually? So do all of the, what's the reporting back to SED on all of these? Do you have to do that annually? I mean, how does that work?
We, any change order that we create, we actually have an SED certification that Dr. Douglas has to sign. They all get submitted to SED. I'm not going to say that SED loses them.
At least once.
But we make sure that, we carefully track anything that is submitted. And of course, at the end is when we submit our financial reports, which Judy is heavily.
So you don't have to wait for anything to happen once you do that?
SED takes a while to approve the change order. Once they can get it, we can go online and see where they log it in. And they, you know, log it in for two weeks once they get it. And then they sometimes will tend to backlog it. But we can track it all the way through. When it's finally approved by SED, we track it on our spreadsheet. We just go to the system, go over that line at USDepartmentLaborFishingPlanning.com, this county, and they look up the whole project, any change order that comes through.
But do you have to wait to make the changes until you get them approved?
No, no. These certain changes, the architects approved, the owners approved it, we approved it. We believe it's a legitimate change order. And SED, the only thing we ever question about, try to do maintenance or try to get like, if you were just doing renovation around your kitchen area, if one hit a new stove or a new kettle, they won't allow that anymore. They'll kick that back at you.
So very cautious on equipment based, I am sneaking in the project.
They've become a lot stricter with money. But we pretty much all know what that is now, so it's, and they've been very good to deal with. SED, we can all ask them, let's Greg give the painting, the architect, they call them. They retain the paintings and the other things, sensible, ahead of time, they have the money. So we got that approved ahead of time, actually, with that.
So it's unlikely you're going to institute the change and then later on, SED will say, sorry, shouldn't have done that. We, we're not going to approve that.
It's very likely.
Okay.
It could happen, but it's usually very rare, especially, that's one of the reasons why we brought in a construction management company to take some of that risk out of it.
See, and any of the odd change orders, we will get with them beforehand to say, okay, we want to expand this project. We want to paint the trusses. Is that going to be okay? Is it going to be aidable? Do you have any questions with it? And they've actually been pretty good with that pre-authorization. So this way, we're not stuck just chugging out.
It's like, like on the change orders tonight, although we didn't necessarily go through this process because of time crunch, SED already said, they were talking to SED, their big thing is you must get it done or at least substantially complete by June 30th.
Right. Okay. Got it. Thanks.
Anything else on the change order?
Okay. I would recommend, again, that like Dr. Douglas said, maybe have a threshold at each level of anything over 100,000 gets reported out.
Yeah. So the gross aggregate would be up to 100,000 at each level. We would take this form and we would post, we'd move it from draft to approved based on the board's recommendation.
Do I have a motion to approve the first and second? Any further discussion? On favor? Any opposed? Any objections that carries?
Okay. So we've had two days of official summer construction and we've already encountered our first big hiccup or bump with the track reconstruction. We recently discovered that the construction, the construction documents do not include the milling of the half-inch rubbery surface on the track, okay? All it calls for is basically a repainting of the top surface, okay? The engineers calling this a rejuvenated track, okay, which means a lifespan of, they're guessing anywhere from three to five years, okay? To replace the rubber surface, to mill it up and give us a new half-inch, gives us a lifespan of eight to 10 years or, or longer, okay? I've had some preliminary conversations with the architect and I'm going to follow up with him to find out how this slipped through the cracks, okay? I know in some of my meetings with some of the user groups, we talked about this specifically and I reported that it was going to be milled up and recoding, okay? Outside of that, which, which we'll, we'll talk about, the point is that we did not buy. It was a bid upon, you know, we didn't buy it. So the construction manager, we've gotten some preliminary estimates, cost estimates from the site guy of about $105,000 to do that, okay? To give us this, this eight to 10-year lifespan, okay? We, we still, we're only day two here. We still have our $1.1 million contingency. And I am optimistic that we're really not going to deplete that by the end of, of the construction period. You know, I kind of look at how many unknowns and unforeseen's that we have. And I just don't see our exposures as overly large, okay? Time will tell. This, this, this construction season will tell. And I am hoping to have enough contingency that maybe we can do some of the alternates that we did not take, okay? So I wanted to make you aware of this, answer any questions, get direction because unfortunately, you know, here we are, July 1, our summer is, you know, fast upon us here. And, you know, this is a very large pickle for us if we want to get the track done.
Are you checking other things to make sure everything else is aligned? Because that's kind of scary that that wasn't picked up.
Well, we had 90 projects that were approved by the voters. And of those, you know, everything had components to it. So we'll have a, we have a meeting tomorrow at 1 o'clock. We're going to talk about this more. You know, I'm, I'm upset that I was told, you know, and that I expressed that to, to various people I met with. It happens, you know, we had so much oversight and observation pre-bid, you know, and we, we looked at these drawings and it happened, okay? So the point is, outside of the blame, what do we want to do as, as a district? And do we want to just go with a rejuvenated track? Or, you know, do we want to move forward and, and, and put in a, a new, a new track?
And after you replace it in three years, doesn't that make sense?
I think we need to do the 10, whatever, the 10-year track.
One of the things Greg forgot to mention, and this just happens because he's had that conversation with me tonight, I, I will tell the board, I remember asking the same question during a board meeting because it was presented at that time. I think Greg presented that it was a refurbishment of the track. And I recall it because Pete DeVries was sitting right over there. And I said, no, what we said, it was a re-milling and resurfacing of the track, to the point, Ashley was here as well. I think Scott, I think you were here, I'm not sure. But they had to go back and check into that. So I'm a little miffed at this. The good part is, and just so that you know, there is a silver lining that I think Greg forgot to mention, is that through our work in our projects and what Greg put out as alternates, which are not part of the project yet, that's hopefully part of the contingency, which he has a good estimate that we may not use that. I'm here to tell you that tonight officially, this budget is 89, I think it's 89 to $92,000 under budget. So that's not even touching the contingency yet. So we have $92,000 because of our work with the roofer, because of our work with, I think, the plumber, that this project right now with all signed contracts, all signed, I think that would be a change order that I have to do for a million dollar credit.
We have them now, yeah.
Back. That will be at our next board meeting. But that brings this project, except for our alternates, under budget. That of this 104, $92,000 is already accounted for in the budget. So we would have to look at the contingency for about $12,000. So I don't want the board to panic, but that was one of the discussions we had today because that's not how we proposed it. And that's not how we look at it, but we have to deal with it. So even though it's bad news, we also have some of the news covered because of the fact that we were trying to make sure that we brought this project in. Now, our alternates, we have, I think, about $620,000 in alternates. We're hoping that we do not touch the contingency by about $500,000 at, at the most because then we could virtually put into place those alternates. However, one of our alternates is whether or not we turf the field with natural sod turf. I had to say that the right way. So please forgive me. Because right now, we have it priced to seed. So each one of those becomes a priority item that we'll have to talk with the Facilities and Grounds Condition Committee on that because we sort of already have put into a general priority order right now from our discussions as money becomes available. I think what Greg and Scott are hoping is that by, I think, January or February of next year, we will have a good control of our contingent items, that then we can start opening up some of our alternates at that point. So I think it's being well managed as far as options, although this is a hiccup that unfortunately we have to address.
Well, hopefully there aren't more hiccups.
Yeah. I, I mean, from both of you, do we experience any, have we experienced anything else? Because I know at project meetings, this is the only thing that sort of rose to the top real quick. And it was mainly because, well, it was major, but it was mainly because of the fact that individuals from our community also went out and started vandalizing the track to dig up certain parts of the track, like the numbers and stuff for memorabilia's sake, even though we know they won't show us where the memorabilia is at this point.
We have a number of, they call them RFI's, requests for information that we get from contractors. They're looking for clarification on the documents. And this is how I weigh really how good our designers have done by, by these numbers. And if there are any items that are unclear, or any ones that, that were so not clear that it's going to cost us money because, well, you didn't tell them to do this or do that. So we've been okay up to now answering them. We have one that we're working on right now regarding some coping stones at Slingerlands, which we all feel that we're rather strong on. And we're meeting with the GC tomorrow to give them that view. Other than that, I'm.
And this is one of the big things. These RFI's are how, I mean, it's part of the business. This is where they, I don't mean this in any derogatory way to the companies that we're working with, but this is how they make their money too. If, if they can argue that something's not clear, there's always a cost to it. The job of the CM, the job of the architect and the job of Greg is to argue whether it was clear or not, this would be a normal expectation. In other words, if you're taking off coping stones, you have to put them back. That's sort of understood. It's not just take them off and leave it there.
I have a question. So is Ashley and all, I don't want to use the word liable, but do they contribute anything to that oversight? Given it's unclear whether it was an oversight, it sounds like it was fairly clear from the district that the, I forget what the term you used, but the.
Retreading.
Retreading or the, you know, more expanded option was what was expected. Is there any contribution from the architect, given that the situation now was just, the expectation was, the cost was based on the painting and not the?
Yeah, that's a discussion we'll have to have, a discussion between CM, the, I like it, the OACM team.
Owner, architect, construction manager.
Thank you.
And what about the proposal or drawings, whatever, that were submitted to SED? Did they call for refurbishing or the painting?
They just called for the paint. The drawings that were submitted to SED is basically what the contractors got. So it just calls for a repainting of the surface, not the milling of that, that rubbery surface.
I didn't know if there was more verbiage. It might have been in some further document that we said this is what the expectation is or not.
Even though in one of those documents, they have to break the track, correct?
No, we were able to use existing lines that we put in in the last construction. So I believe that we.
But I thought you guys said that we were going to have to break the track at one point, no matter what.
To get the water line through, yeah. I think we were able to use existing empty conduits.
I don't mean to use the term break, but that would be.
Cut. Full depth, yeah.
Yes.
Plus, it really didn't feel like that track was completely disperated or fully done. It's broken as a tear between the asphalt.
And again, it's, it's that rubbery mat. Structurally, okay, when we redid it in 2001, that was full depth, okay? So, so we went the full depth and we put in asphalt underneath it and then we put on that rubbery surface, okay? That is still sound, okay? If you look at the track, the track is true. And it's, it's not structurally deficient in any way. It's, it's just this rubber that over time, like anything, you know, it capacks down and it needs to be replenished. There's no sponge in it anymore, so.
I do remember one of the track crews coming and talking about how many kids had shin splints. I remember the discussion about that.
They were saying because of the hardness.
Yeah.
Well, if you look, lane one is, lane one's a lot different than the outside lanes because it gets used a lot.
Because everybody runs in lane one.
Is it customary to have these things or areas that you normally do or you have on a track? Like if you were to survey the, you know, 10 schools that have had their tracks resurfaced, is it customary that you would expect that, that re-milling would be part of the contract?
For this age, yes. And that's why, you know, we were all surprised that it was missed.
Yeah, because normally what would happen is you would mill and put down a track, say new. And then roughly about year six, year seven, you would resurface.
Right.
That would get you to, I believe, like year 12 to year 15, and then you'd have to redo it all.
Right.
There has been no maintenance to the track since, what, 2001, 2002, when it first went down?
No substantial maintenance. I mean, we, we fill cracks and patch holes and, you know, that type of stuff, but not to this magnitude.
And obviously, the decision was made that it needed to be milled and done. So I think that's really the only option left.
I have no doubt in that as an administrator. I think we were saying that all along.
Good point to say that.
So just from my piece of mind, I don't like coming to the board in this way at all. I'm a, a big pre-planner. I like to plan, you know, I like to give people enough notice. But we are in a situation now that if we don't have approval, then we don't get it done this summer. It's questionable whether that, we can do it in the fall time. I'm not even sure about schedule. We have the contractor, the specialty contractor that is already committed to do both tennis courts and the track. Milling it down is, is not that big of a deal as far as added work goes. So he's already committed to the district. So I, I would be very cautious about waiting until next summer. be very cautious about waiting until next summer. So, it would be my recommendation that we do move now on this.
Right, and I don't think we need to vote on it, because technically, we already have. I mean, just that's what we approved.
Well, the only vote would be the...
We'll approve it with a change order.
You'll approve the change order for the purpose of re-milling the track. If you do that tonight, we'll get the documents in line, and so that you know the cost will be roughly an additional twelve thousand dollars from our budget, but the full cost would be about a hundred and four, a hundred and five.
We have a motion to, further discussion?
No, no, she moved it nicely.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I missed that. First and a second, any further discussion?
Just in terms of full disclosure, both my kids run track. Just somebody's...
Well, there are a lot of people, but...
I know, it's one of the people that...
The kid's a snow blower as well.
All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions that carries?
Then Greg, if you can, within two weeks, I want to report in regards to this, to me, and then I'll drop, draft that to the board, or at least by the next board meeting. I've got to get to the bottom of why this wasn't, because honestly, we said it, I know you, I even had to question you in open session, because you said resurface, and we had to question that point. So, if anybody needs recall, please tell them to visit www.bcsd, Board of Education Videos Pass, because I don't even have to think about it. I know that discussion happened very clearly here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. At this point, the board would recognize any visitors who would like to address the board on any agenda items. Anyone here? No? Okay. Item number thirteen, finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items A through J. That's a first and a second.
Can I ask some questions?
Yes. Any discussion, yep?
I just have a couple of questions on the food service report, and I know, I think I had requested some of this data, so just as a follow-up. One was, Judy, the reference on the documents that you shared was the B C B, which is the B C blend of items, and then the F S W, food service worker. So, just can you tell me exactly what that means? I sort of thought I knew what it meant when I saw B C blend, but is that like a brand?
B C blend is the name of the coffee shop, so...
Okay.
The way they designate the various items is that it is sold in B C blend, so it's just a designation. It's a coffee shop item as opposed to another type of an alocart item.
Okay. So, when you look on here, and like, if you, if you take, say, the egg sandwich as an example, we don't, I think it was on here. I thought we didn't sell... Well, there's some items where we sell a lot of them under the B C blend, so that means they're being sold in the little cafe, and then we don't sell hardly any of those same items, F S W. So, that means they're not being sold in the other venues that they're being offered.
And F S W is an employee sale of the item, so that's where they're ringing up what they have purchased while they're working there.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so that's basically, you can see the counts are relatively slight, but it is tracked.
Oh, okay.
As to employee purchases, and then everything else, our students and other staff purchases of those items.
Okay. So, that column at the end where it says adult, that shows the adults purchasing, that means that that would encompass faculty and those types of folks.
Correct.
And not the staff of the cafe or the food worker.
Correct.
Okay, I got it. And the other thing that I, that's not really clear is what, you know, what's driving, because this is a moneymaker for the district, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Right. So, what's not clear on here is exactly, you can see what the sales are, but you don't really know what the profit margin is. In other words, you know, are we making a lot of money per egg sandwich and not so much money per, you know, another top seller bagel, as an example? Or, you know, coffee, quite honestly. I would assume coffee is probably a high profit margin item.
Some items have higher markup than other, yes.
Okay. So, that's not on here, and that would be helpful. I mean, I'm not trying to make work, but if that is available, I think that would be helpful in kind of understanding why we sell certain things and why, you know, why we would like to sell certain things. But, it was pretty clear on this document, you know, that, that coffee is a big seller. The iced coffees in particular, sixteen ounces of the B C blend iced coffee, you know, that's a powerful driver of the revenue of the total. You know, that's kind of illustrating one of the issues that I've had, which is, we are selling a lot of coffee to a lot of youth, a lot of high school kids. So, it's not a non-issue with respect to what's actually going out the door. And I think personally, you know, I've raised this before, I'll raise it again, I think, and especially, you know, that article I even referenced, actually, one of the things that, that New York Times referenced was the fact that stimulants have a very powerful effect on the youth brain, and certain parts of the youth brain that they were speaking to in the article. And I think it's something that, you know, is a valid public health issue, quite honestly. We are selling, apparently in large numbers, a powerful stimulant to youth who don't necessarily have the capacity metabolically to process that at that level. And I would take issue with that. So, thank you for the report. I know I've asked for this. I appreciate the information.
Anyone else?
Oh, I have a question on, on different ones here, on the fees for the facilities and fees for the subs and whatever. Are those the same as last year, Judy? I just wasn't sure.
Oh, the facility use fees, yes, those are the same.
And also the substitute rates, too?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I guess I hadn't realized that. For any school organization, there is no facility fee. It's just they pay for, if we need to have custodians on staff.
Extra custodial time, yes.
Okay. So, I was thinking that previously, there had been, there's never been any fees charged to those groups?
No, they get to use the district space. They get priority for that space, so.
Those are like the P T As and things like that.
Considered a school-based program, yeah, P T A organizations, yeah.
I have a question. When was the last time those were assessed, that whole rate schedule was assessed? Not the sub rates, but the...
The facility rental?
Yes.
Just recently, as a matter of fact. We used our internal auditor to do a study of how do we compare to other districts, and he had reported back to the audit committee that in fact, we were within range, that the structure of the fees was easy enough for people to understand, but that it did an adequate job of raising the funds to cover the costs for those various rentals.
The only other question, minimum wage, what is that now? Isn't it more than eight dollars an hour?
There's a different minimum for federal and state, so our rates are in compliance with where we need to be. I'd have to look up to tell you what they are. Federal, yeah, one is, I think, like seven eighty, but we are in compliance.
I just was thinking it was at eight twenty-five. I don't know why I was thinking that.
And there's phasing in, is increasing over time, so...
It's on state room.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions that carries? Item number fourteen, nineteen, professional personnel has recommended that the Board of Education approve the following instructional staff action, action items A through K. That's a first and a second. Any discussion?
I just want to recognize Linda Barry and Anne Marie Becker for the years of service as library media specialist. That was Linda and Anne Marie Becker at Slingerlands, you know, being here for a long time, and appreciate their service to the district.
Yes.
Especially since they probably won't be here at the end of the year, next year, to be recognized.
Oh, yeah, the retiring teachers, yeah. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions that carries? Item number twenty, support personnel has recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items A through I.
Some of them.
So, first?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions that carries? Item number twenty-one, correspondence for action. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following correspondence for action items A through K.
Some of them.
That's a first?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
The item J, the approval of the extension of athletic football reconditioning service contract, I tried to decipher exactly what that was in the document that accompanied this, this board packet, and was unable to figure out. Can you just tell me what that is?
Believe, the helmet...
Yeah, it's the helmets. Rather than buying new helmets, they rebuild them.
There's a certain type of safety standard that has to be recertified each year.
Okay.
We have to send everything out, then we have to, we have a request for proposal contract with a company.
Okay.
This allows that to extend, so you don't have to go out, but sooner or later, we'll have to go out again for a request for proposal.
And it's only for football helmets?
It's for anything that we put on a student's head that would require N O X C certification. But, right now, that primarily is just the football helmets, like softball helmets. If they provide them themselves, they must make sure that they're certified and proved to us.
Okay, so hockey helmets fall in the same category, is that? Okay.
Lacrosse, do they wear helmets?
Lacrosse, yeah.
They do, boys lacrosse.
Like, girls softball, boys baseball helmets, a lot of them wear their own personal helmet. They have to show and produce the N O X C seal on the helmet.
Okay, but football, they wear district helmets?
They wear district helmets, yes.
And that's the only sport that we have where they wear?
Currently, at this point, yes.
Okay. Yeah, it was confusing, because there's all kinds of reference to other school districts in there, and...
Is it supposed, they do years ago, they say?
Okay, okay, I got it.
This way, we get the A on it as well.
You get a higher volume, too, so you get lower prices on the work that's being done by banding together with the others.
Yeah, that's interesting, because, you know, you look at a sport like hockey, high contact sport, I would argue, there's probably, I don't know the data, but equal potential for concussions and so forth in hockey as in football.
A lot of it is because the students play outside of the school environment, so they need their own personal equipment, where with football, the only thing they play outside is usually a camp, and they have to check it out from us, and it has to be a certified helmet. But, other than that, that's the major issue, and because of the collision and impact of that sport directly related to our putting proper safety gear on the student.
Okay, and lacrosse, too? The same reasoning?
See, a lot of those, I mean, you don't have many outside football programs.
Right.
But, you do have outside lacrosse programs, outside hockey programs. That's the best I can explain it.
Okay. I would raise it during budget time. If you feel like we should be doing something differently, we should plan ahead for it.
No, I guess my, I mean, it's a, I'm glad to know what exactly it is. You know, I think that the one issue I think is worth sort of examining maybe more deeply is whether or not we're really monitoring the equipment of kids playing in other high contact sports like, like lacrosse, boys lacrosse, and hockey, obviously, could, you know, because, like I said, equal potential for a kid to get hurt, we would want to make sure that we, as a district, are making sure that we're, you know, ensuring that kids are safe in all of high contact, every sport, but high contact especially.
Most of the reps are pretty good, at least in hockey, with if there's a violation of the neck guard or something.
Yeah, no, or the mouth guard.
But, in terms of the helmet itself, there's really not...
Yeah, I've never seen a hockey ref question someone's helmet, ever.
See, like, and every sport's different, like, as a baseball official, we're required to go over and say, line your helmets up, and give them a pressure check.
Yeah, they don't do that in hockey, yeah.
So, each sport is unique.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question for Jody. I know we have the P D P and R T I and all the alphabet words. Annually, we used to approve the A P P R Plan Two before it became associated with the Common Core learning standards. Now, my question is, obviously, we don't have to approve that now, but as a result...
No, you approved it less, but it's approved generally in September.
Oh, okay. But, will we have to modify it as a result of the legislation that was recently passed? Okay, we haven't heard anything about what might need to be done with, okay.
We're planning, I mean, Jody's being...
Jody's being kind, because we received a wonderful letter from State Ed today saying that we need to modify our plans and telling us all the things we need to modify and do, when actually, we already do that in our testing program. We think they've looked at somebody else's plan. But, our position, if possible, is that we have something that's working right now that's in a much better light than we feel that the entire state is working off of, that we're hoping there won't be any major changes, because State Ed has been very difficult, especially with us, and we've been one of the leaders in the A P P R development process. So, I think Jody's position, I think the unit's position is, if we do not have to make a change, we're set.
Right. They haven't, we haven't gotten any guidance on the legislation, so I know it's surprising, but...
You find out at the last minute, and then say, well, gee, it has to be in next week.
Seeing how scores are due at this point, you'd think that the new legislation would have come with the guidance immediately, because we have to finish our A P P R.
Right, but I'm sure State Ed right now is formulating whatever is associated with, you know, the new laws that impact their department.
I'm sure it'll be to us.
We hope.
A week or so.
No, I mean, the agencies, state agencies aren't very quick on the uptake.
It's awful hard to interpret legislative intent to commissioner regulation. So, that will be interesting to see what comes out of this.
And staff is limited at State Ed.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions that carries? Recognition of visitors at this time, if there are any visitors who would like to address the board on any non-agenda item? Being none? Okay, moving on. Future meetings. Our next board meeting is Wednesday, August thirteenth, and I note that that is not a normal, the first or third Wednesday of the month. It's actually the second, right? Second Wednesday of the month, that we have that. And that, I believe, is mainly because we need to set the tax rate and all that, and by the time everything gets settled, we don't have it prior to that timeframe, so...
Did you want to talk about a retreat date around, you know, that same time?
Yeah, yeah.
He's getting it.
Well, let me just finish it. The next day after that is Wednesday, September third, a regular board meeting. Again, executive session would start at six P M with the regular board meeting at seven P M. And that would be, is that the first day of school? Do they come back Wednesday or Thursday?
They come back Thursday.
Thursday, Thursday, okay.
Yeah, we're on a normal schedule this...
So, we probably won't see any pig students still, so...
No.
Okay.
Retreat dates.
And retreat dates. Let's talk about dates that were available for retreats.
You know, one thing I do, I find is very helpful, we can, I'll break out our own accounts, but I know that Brittany's doodle calendar is also another tool for us, unless we all want to go through datebooks.
Well, we have to be there the thirteenth. How long do you want, you're going to be free for? How many hours do we need?
You can do it the same night, doesn't it?
No.
No, because you'll have, they'll have a construction update again.
You never know if there's anything else that might take us some time.
Can I suggest that we do the doodle calendar, because my phone battery died, so I don't have access to my calendar?
Can I ask, is anyone making a major vacation or not available, say, not next week, but over the next three weeks, say?
I will be out of town the Thursday and Friday, the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, whatever that weekend is, somewhere around there.
I'm gone a lot until I...
Thirty, thirty-first.
Because I'm just, this helps us to make a doodle calendar, just try to stay away.
I was hoping we could do something close to the board meeting date in August. Would be easier, not after, because I, I, I have to, I have to be at another conference starting the fourteenth, but like, even on Monday or Tuesday.
College orientation and interrupt there. I think I'm gone July thirteenth and fourteenth, and then again, August fifteenth.
We have administrative retreat twelfth and thirteenth of August, so I was hoping to have it before that point.
What about that first, first Wednesday in August?
Why don't we put the doodle calendar out?
I'm going.
Put the doodle calendar out for the next two months, and everybody book when they're available.
And then, first of all, put the dates you're not on there, so we don't have to rewrite it. You know what I mean? Like, if you know you can't do it on the twelfth and thirteenth, put that there, so we don't all have to look it there.
We'll try to look at certain things and get those dates out of the way.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. We'll do that tomorrow and have it out to you then.
Do you have access yet to the portal?
I do.
I do.
Okay, good.
I think all the email groups have been updated now. I would say, whatever night we have the board retreat, say it's that first night, I don't know how you feel, or August thirteenth, whichever one, which is dress-up night. Because you need to have a new board picture taken.
No, let's do it at the board meeting.
Do it in January or something.
Well, no, we'll do it, we'll do it at the August board meeting.
August...
Really?
Yeah, I don't, the retreat, I want to be a bit careful, I don't want to have to dress up the other day, then.
So at the thirteenth meeting, the board...
Either that or the September, the first one in September.
Okay.
Are we willing to even do it, say, of a Saturday or Sunday? Or are we just throwing out Monday through Friday dates?
No.
Yeah, okay. We have to unretreat Saturday morning.
Yeah, in the winter time.
Yeah, one of, one of my concerns would be that we may also need to use, just because of some of the things that are happening, if this is a little earlier before that time, as an opening, that we may have to have some subtle board action, especially depending on the project at that point, so it would be hard. Yeah, but it would be hard to do something like that with a retreat on Saturday, so as long as if we needed something else. No, I know, but just the appearance for the...
Yeah, we've done it before, but in the winter, not in the summer.
I thought we did it a lot, we used to do the budget ones.
Yeah, but it was March, and, you know, not in the summer.
Six AM Saturday morning, what's wrong with that? No.
Yeah, we could go for a...
Right, and then we go to the Y afterwards or something, you know? All right, I guess we have a, we're done. No need to go into executive session?
No.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? First and second, all in favor? Aye.